Good evening, councilors and our guests. Welcome to the Springfield City Council Hearings Meeting. It is now 6:35 on Monday, August 17th. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez. Absent. Counselor Whitfield? Counselor Whitfield?
If we could come back to her. Madam Clerk, she's having some difficulties.
Counselor Davila?
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton?
Present.
Present. Counselor Curran? Absent. Counselor Ramos? Present. Counselor Walsh?
Here.
Here. Counselor Williams?
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen?
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman?
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown? Absent. Counselor Hurst?
Present. Can you please acknowledge Counselor Whitfield as I believe she is now able to hear?
Counselor Whitfield?
Present.
Present.
Well, councilors and their guests, please rise for a moment of silence. Will you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, councilors, I apologize. While this is a hearings meeting, I did not realize that we were not going to meet again until, I believe it is September 14th. And so, once I realized that, I knew there was some time-sensitive information and items that councilors and the administration wanted to put forward, knowing that our next regular meeting would not be for another month. So, I apologize, but we are going to get started with our first three items that are not going to be special permits. So, Madam Clerk, and then we'll get to the special permits right after we entertain these three items. I also reached out for the counselor's information to TJ Plant, our CFO, and asked him if there were any financial items that were time-sensitive and that he needed to get approved before the 14th, and he said no. So, we'll entertain these three items, and then we'll move to our actual hearings meeting and our special permits that we're going to entertain tonight. So, Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item on the agenda?
The first item on the agenda is Black Lives Matter mural.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes, Mr. President, I am Counselor Tracy Whitfield. I do want to speak to the item, but I do want folks to know that I may get a little emotional because it is an emotional topic, as I am a black mother with a black son and a black daughter. And I just want to speak to the mural and why it's important. And any questions that you all have on the steps that were taken, I'll be glad to answer after I say a couple of things. So, I want to start with letting you guys know some statistics about the killings of black people by police nationwide. Black men are three times more likely to be killed by police than white men. Ninety-nine percent of police killing of black men from 2013 to 2019 resulted in no criminal charges. So, when my son, a black 21-year-old male, leaves in my car and his inspection sticker just expired, my nerves went wild. Because if he's pulled over because of that inspection sticker, will he come home? And, you know, many a times, that's not something that, you know, my white counterparts may have to think about. But that is definitely the things that we have to think about when our children leave. Will they be stereotyped? Will they be pulled over? Will they be stopped just for walking down the street? Will they come home? Will they come home? And, I mean, we all know that that's not the only thing that can happen to them, but it's always a concern. I don't want you to take my car because my inspection sticker is expired, and you might get pulled over by an officer and not return home because of it. I also wanted to talk a little bit about what the Black Lives Movement is. It is a movement where we talk about black lives. We talk about police brutality. It's where new conversations are created. It's a call to action where black people can reimagine a world where black people are free to live and free to exist, where black allies show up differently. And I want to thank a black ally. I want to thank Nathanville owner, Robert Gossman. He showed up differently. He showed up to have a conversation, to, you know, come to an agreement, to make peace, to let us know that we are important. And at the request of Council President Hurst and Talbot Swan and Tara Peirce of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and Tim Allen for organizing, Counselor Allen for organizing the meeting last minute. We were able to ask for a donation toward the Black Lives Matter mural. We asked for a small donation, and he offered to pay for the mural in its totality. And so, thank you, Robert, for showing up differently. This is how we need our allies to show up. When you see us being racially discriminated at the grocery store, when you see us being racially discriminated because of whatever reason at work, show up differently. So, this mural doesn't say we're anti-anybody, doesn't say we're anti-police, because we know that they're black police, so we will be anti ourselves. It just says that black lives really do matter in America. And when black people are treated fair and with justice, when we are not stereotyped for the color of our skin, when we are not pulled over simply because we're black, when we're not shot and killed simply for being a black person, when we are judged for the content of our character and not the color of our skin, and we know who famously said that, then and only then will all lives matter. You cannot say all lives matter and then leave out a group of people where historically their lives did not matter. And so, this mural is activating a space to symbolize the actions on the part of the city, politicians, artists, and the community. It's used to raise people's awareness that Black Lives Matter fight is significant. It is a symbol. It stands up to the powers that deny black people their humanity. The mural makes the statement that the protesters and all those who fight for racial justice are being heard, and that those who are not on the side of the fight for justice for black lives have been put on notice that the city of Springfield stands for racial and social justice. This is a bold statement in the form of a mural, and it speaks for the voices of people who are taking bold steps to fight for justice in the midst of adversity and in the midst of a pandemic. And I will take any questions that anyone may have at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just barely got that in. You were just about to say seeing none. First off, I want to thank Tracy for the great opening statement and for acknowledging Robbie Gossman of Nathanville's. I did try to reach him a couple of times today to invite him to this. I thought it would be nice if he could hear, not knowing what Tracy was going to say. But I didn't reach him, but I will pass on the words. It's an important moment for us, and it's important that we come together around social and racial justice for everyone. And I think this mural will be a great thing for Springfield. So, thanks for the good words, Tracy, and good luck to all of us with getting it done and having it matter in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief with my comments. I'd like to compliment you and Counselor Whitfield for this effort into bringing this mural into our city, and also to thank and compliment the owner of Nathanville's for stepping up and funding this project entirely. I do agree with Counselor Whitfield. This is a bold statement. It's a bold statement that needs to be made in this city. It's a bold statement that God willing, it's going to resonate throughout the region. I enthusiastically supporting this. It is a very good bold statement. And I have to say briefly, in a personal note, myself as a Latino, it is, maybe I want to tell you that this form of discrimination is not fun. I remember myself briefly in the late 1980s, the first time that I experienced discrimination. I was denied service here in Springfield because I was speaking my native tongue as Spanish. I will never forget that that marked me from my life. And so, I will do everything in power to combat discrimination and social justice, and enthusiastically will support this mural. And my compliments to all of them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Walsh?
Oh, well, I would just like to say that I think this is a proud moment for everybody in the city of Springfield, not only for supporting the movement, but for the get-together, put-together by yourself, Tracy, Tim Allen, Talbot Swan, and the owners of Nathanville, which was a contentious situation. But Springfield showed the world that people can work together and come together, and something positive happens as a result of it. And I think we should all be very proud, and I hope this will be unanimous vote.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Fenton.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to arise to speak in support of the order brought forward by our colleague, Counselor Whitfield, and then, of course, all of the colleagues that have supported her. I just want to thank you for your leadership on the issue. And I think I also want to say that the placement of the mural itself, which I certainly plan to support and had planned to make a donation towards until such a generous donation was secured to.
We'll take a donation.
What happened. Certainly, we'll make sure that a donation is made in an appropriate area. But I think the fact that it's right outside City Hall, outside the chambers, where in normal times, we sit and make policy, and outside the building that is ultimately the People's Hall in downtown Springfield is an important statement. And when we saw one of the largest marches, I think, in Springfield's history in the wake of the death and murder of George Floyd, and when myself and several other councilors, certainly yourself, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Davila, Counselor Williams, and I were marching down State Street, we looked around and remarked at how many people were in the street. And of all the movements that myself and Counselor Williams, especially being younger members of the council, have been a part of, we'd never seen so many people come out in the city of Springfield. And later on that day, I found myself on the protest line talking with many of the young people that were there. And, you know, they had strong words, and they had real questions about what their elected leaders in the city of Springfield were doing to show that black lives matter. And in speaking with them about some of the legislation that I think we had already brought forward on this body and that colleagues had brought forward, and legislation since, I think the most important thing is not only to say to the people of Springfield that we're going to paint this mural, but that the mural is a physical manifestation of our commitment to the laws that we're going to make when we sit in that chamber and look out over that mural. So, not only do we need to paint and say the words "Black Lives Matter", but we also need to vote and cast the votes that show and uphold that commitment through that mural. So, I appreciate your leadership, certainly cudge myself to that effort as well, and look forward to seeing passage tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Fenton?
I just wanted to thank Counselor Whitfield personally and everybody else involved in bringing this forward. It's a tremendous moment. I'm thrilled to be able to support it. These things don't just happen. There's a lot of planning and logistics and work that goes into this. And I want to thank Counselor Whitfield personally for taking my call to talk about some of the questions I had about the logistics and the process and for being really thoughtful about the way that this has been approached. I echo all the sentiments that were said earlier, but I could not have said it better than the way that Counselor Whitfield did. So, I'm proud to be in support and really proud of the way, as Counselor Walsh said, that the cities come together in a moment that was... contentious is the right word. And to find a space of unity and a space where we can get together and say that Black Lives Matter as a city is really a powerful thing for us to be doing. And I want to thank the members who worked so hard on it, and I'm proud to join you.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Counselor Whitfield, I see you have your hand raised. And so, before I give you the opportunity to speak, can you please include in your next statement maybe some of the logistics in terms of when this is going to take place? And certainly, that is why we're entertaining it now and not at our first meeting. So, if you could just tell the listening audience when this will take place and who's involved, it'd be greatly appreciated. Counselor Whitfield?
Sure. Thank you, Council President Hurst. I first wanted to thank you for, you know, the moment I brought the idea to you. You earned full support, and every meeting you were at, you know, you didn't have to do it. You read through the proposal that I put together and gave your feedback. And I appreciate you always at least listening, whether you agree or not. You at least listen, and you give your honest feedback. And I truly, truly appreciate you as a president at this time of the council. I wanted to welcome Britt Rue and Kim, who are the lead artists that set forward and designed the mural of how the layout would be, and also gave some input on the proposal. And the scheduled date for now is September 12th. We had to go through the logistics of getting approval from the Board of Public Works and then getting approval from the council for the permit, and then going on to get a permit, which we have to have multiple departments sign the permit. And so, all of that is time-consuming. I didn't know if we could get the Board of Public Works approval by this meeting. And so, if we had to push it out to the first meeting in September, would have gave us more time by having the mural painted on the 12th of September. So, it should be from 8:00 to 4:00 to be an all-day event. The community will be invited. Of course, social distance will be in place. We'll be working with the Commissioner, Colton Harris, on that, as well as DBW and the Police Department. I also wanted to thank Counselor Ramos. He actually purchased a Black Lives Matter flag, and he said that we will be able to raise it the day of the event or before the event. And so, I commend you. He wanted to do it sooner, but I just didn't have time, and I dropped the ball, and I apologize for that. But thank you for even being considerate enough to purchase a Black Lives Matter flag, because I don't know anyone who would have done that for us. So, thank you, Counselor Ramos. And if there's any other questions, Counselor President Hurst, that's all I have.
There are no further questions or comments from the council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the petition, Counselor Gomez. Absent. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran? Absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown? Absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The petition is approved. Congratulations, Counselor Whitfield. Well done. Madam Clerk, before we announce the next item, I would be remiss if I didn't send condolences on behalf of the entire City Council to our colleagues, Counselor Edwards, as well as Counselor Walsh, to you and your families who have lost a close family member over the past week. So, we certainly appreciate that you all are even joining us today, and certainly send our condolences to you and your families. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is the PACE program.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item? Counselor Fenton? Before you speak, Counselor Sheehan, Counselor Fenton? Counselor Fenton, I think you're on mute, Counselor Fenton.
Oh, sorry. I was just saying, Tim, we're co-sponsors. So, if you want to start, that's fine with me. I don't care.
Go right ahead, Counselor.
Okay. So, councilors, this is an order to join Springfield into the PACE program. The PACE program is a relatively new creation of state statute that allows for green energy developments to be deployed in commercial settings for private businesses or nonprofits. And basically, can you answer any questions that you guys might have about it? But the way it came up for me was I had a few clients in the Berkshires and in Franklin County that were financing improvements to their commercial structures through this new state statute. And the way that it works is you work with Mass Development. You borrow money against your property for purposes of deploying green technology. It's usually solar. And the city or town participates by creating a betterment lien on the property to secure Mass Development's investment. And so, it's a really creative way to allow for green infrastructure investment in the private sector. It gives additional access to capital to private developers who otherwise wouldn't have it. And it's different from a private arms-length commercial transaction with a green solar developer, because by virtue of the city's participation, the city has what's known as the highest perfected priority lien that you can have on a property for real estate taxes. And so, the reason that the city participates isn't because we kick in the money. Mass Development kicks in the money. But the city's deal is we come in and we say, all right, because we support this and because we want to see these types of investments, we will allow you to use the city infrastructure and the city's perfected first priority lien status on municipal tax bills to secure your investment in this green energy technology. So, basically, this is the way it works. You own a commercial building. It's probably going to be mostly places downtown. I know there's already some interest from people. You want to borrow from Mass Dev to put a solar installation on the roof. Mass Dev lends you the money, and to secure that loan, the city will take a lien for the value of the note against the real estate. And the reason that that piece is so important is because different from a private solar developer taking a mortgage on the property, the city's lien is in first position, even before the bank. And so, there's participation agreements that get negotiated with the lenders. But that's basically how it works. And there's already interest, I know, from developers in downtown Springfield in doing it. And I know there's a bunch of other communities across the Commonwealth that are starting it. But I mentioned the idea to the mayor and to Tim Sheehan. And Tim was already working on it, and Tom Moore was quick enough to get a draft turned around in a few weeks. So, I think that's about it. I don't know, Tom or Tim, if you want to fill in at all, but that's why I brought it forward. It's just an order accepting the act and authorizing the mayor to do it. And I'll turn it over to Tim and Tom if they want to fill in at all.
Thank you, Counselor. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tim Sheehan, Chief Development Officer, 26 Ekkington Street, Springfield, Massachusetts. First of all, I wanted to thank the council for taking the item up this evening. It is kind of important because there is some timeliness issues associated with this. As Counselor Fenton indicated, there are property owners that want to line up their construction work and get it done as quickly as possible. From the economic development staff standpoint, we look at this as a win-win. It allows the commercial property owners in the city a tremendous way in which to reinvest in their Springfield real estate, create additional property value, contribute to creating green energy jobs, and improve our collective environment by reducing energy consumption. And the only... I would like to also indicate that Wendy Lee O'Malley, Vice President of Mass Development, is in the audience this evening, and she is the PACE Program Director. I think the only thing that I would add on to what Counselor Fenton said is that Mass Development is the administrator of the program, not necessarily the lender. They coordinate with the lenders and ensure that the payments are made from the lien to Mass Development from the city, and then Mass Development ensures that the lender is then given their payment. I don't know if Wendy had anything more to add, but I think Counselor Fenton gave you a pretty good oversight of the project.
Ms. O'Malley, did you want to say anything?
Hello, Counselor.
If you could please state your name and address for the record.
This is Wendy Lee O'Malley, PACE Program Manager and Vice President, Mass Development, 99 High Street, Boston, Mass 02110. Thank you for your time, counsel. I'll be brief. This new financing program that we're rolling out at Mass Development is available to new commercial industrial property owners. We have 22 municipalities that have already opted into the program. We're really excited to start working with property owners in Springfield on this program. They have asked us for the opportunity to apply for financing. So, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I think Tim and Counselor Fenton covered the detail, so I won't recover them at this time.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this order? Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Davila?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. I just rise to speak in favor of the order. Thank you, Counselor Fenton and Tim, for bringing it forward. Actually, last year, I had held two committee meetings on the PACE program. We actually had Ms. O'Malley at City Hall to go over it. And at that time, the regulations had not yet been finalized and hadn't been finalized when I had checked in last. But I'm glad that it looks like it's moving along and that it's on the agenda before us today. So, I definitely encourage folks to support moving the order forward and accepting it. I think it's an excellent opportunity for the commercial industrial properties in the city and just to be able to bring more green infrastructure in as well. So, certainly a positive development for the city, and I just asked the clerk to add me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got some two quick questions. The first one is just for clarity purposes. This item in front of us, is it in order or in ordinance?
I believe it's in order, but I'll let Attorney Moore speak to that.
Yeah, because it says ordinance and order, so I'm just...
Attorney Moore?
Sure. Yeah, the way that opting into the program works, the state sort of sets forth a boil plate. So, what we have before us is something that the state has actually kind of given in a set format. When they did that, they actually termed it both in order and in ordinance. So, it seems to be a little confusing on its face. But in this case, you should really look at it as an order, something you're accepting. We do this often when there's a state statute that allows us to opt in. It is not to confuse it with like a local law that we'd be enacting, which would take like a three-step process to vote. No, that's probably where Counselor's going with this question. So, what I'll say is it actually acts as an order. It's termed in order and in ordinance, but we can treat it as acceptance through order.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. You always bring priority in your real life. Thank you for that explanation.
Appreciate it.
So, I just have a quick question. Thank you to Counselor Fenton and to Tim Sheehan for your... Ms. O'Malley for your explanation. But I'm just wondering, and this sounds like it's a good program for the city, and it's going to help the environment versus everyone doing for us. Can you guys provide some examples of the people that have some interest to use this PACE program? What are they going to be using? What kind of environmental or green thing they're going to be doing for it?
The property owner... Well, let me just, first of all, say that we have some interest in commercial office properties already. And Wendy, I'll defer to you. But my understanding is that that is dealing with HVAC work to improve that. And I don't know if that answers the question you're looking for, Counselor.
Yeah, that's a good example. I just wanted to have something concrete.
I also wanted to just let the council know that both Mass Development and I reached out to Collector Treasurer, Chris Caputo. And we also, I had a discussion directly with Richie Allen from the Assessors' Office to talk about the program. And to my knowledge, there is no objection with the council approving the order as before you this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Thank you, Mr. President. I will be voting in favor of this. This is a good thing for us.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Counselor Allen and Counselor Fenton for bringing it forward. Thank you, Tim, for into it and getting all the information we need. And Ms. O'Malley for joining us today. My question, I didn't quite understand, or maybe I was a bit close enough attention to the lien part of it and how that works. But before you answer, any one of you answer, I just want to say to my colleagues, I'm sorry and condolences on your losses. Counselor Walsh, I did try to call you, but I guess I got an old number. And I did speak to Counselor Edwards, so, sorry, I just wanted to say that.
I'll defer to Ms. O'Malley for that.
Sure, I can speak to that. So, to clarify, this financing is repaid via a betterment assessment that's levied on the property that's obtaining the financing. And in order to levy the assessment that's secured by a lien that we ask the city to place on the property at the closing and to assign to Mass Development in turn. And Mass Development in turn assigns it to the lender who holds the lien for the duration of the financing. And that's how it works.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In fact, let's take this vote and then we'll, or maybe we won't. Madam Clerk, can you please acknowledge Counselor Gomez?
Counselor Gomez?
Present.
Present.
Thank you for joining us, Counselor Gomez. I know you did have a forum, which I neglected to mention, that you had to attend. So, thank you for joining us after your forum. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll if there are no further questions regarding this order?
On approving the order to create, to accept the PACE statute, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Current Absent, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown, absent, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
I'd also like to say to Counselor Walsh and Counselor Edwards, I'm very sorry for your losses. I didn't hear, but now that I have heard, I'll be sure to send each of you something. The next item on the agenda is the election warrant.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Good evening, Counselors. Gladys Oyola, Election Commissioner for the City of Springfield, 38 Roland Street, Springfield, Massachusetts. Counselors, you have before you both the election warrant for the September primary, which is slated to take place on September 1st, as well as the list of polling locations. Typically, when I come before this body to present this, it's a pretty cut and dry, straightforward process wherein we haven't moved any of the polling locations, which is true for the September election as well. But what I would like to do, if you would give me a brief moment, is to just kind of speak a little more in-depth about the polling locations because this year will be different in that we're going to have many polling locations that are municipal buildings. So, we have pretty good control for those sites in terms of social distancing, how the setup is done. And especially this year, because the schools have, will not be open during the election and during the primary, we have kind of a safer space, both for voters and we won't have children in the schools. The other locations, which are 12 locations that are not city buildings, we've reached out to either the management owners or whoever runs the locations to make sure that the setup for those polling places and the space that we're going to use inside those polling locations is set up so as to make sure that any voter that is visiting the polling location is safe. We're also working to keep our poll workers safe. And this year, we've had, we've reached out and collaborated with Pat Sullivan from Facilities in order to get Smith &amp; Wesson to donate glasses for our poll workers. The Secretary of the Commonwealth has also supplied all of the city and towns with PPE for the polling locations. So, each individual polling site is going to get their own face mask for the poll workers, gloves, sanitizing materials, wipes, as well as Plexiglas face shields, the type of shields that would sit on the actual table when voters check in and out, similar to what you would see at a grocery store, at a CVS. Those were created by facilities, and they're going to be at every single polling place. So, we're really taking into account a safe, in-person voting experience for this election to make sure that anyone who hasn't chosen to vote by mail will feel safe in going to the polls and be familiar with the polling locations because they haven't changed. For November, that may be different. In talking to Counselor Walsh, we're talking about possibly changing the location of the Forest Park Library over to the school because we will have access. So, that's one of the sites that may change for the better so that there is more ample parking, better space in the building to be able to facilitate two polling locations. But for right now, for the September election, it's going to be everyone at the same polling places that they're used to.
Thank you, Commissioner, Counselor.
That up. I think I realized too late that you wouldn't have enough time to change the primary. I think a lot of people will be very happy to have more parking and more access voting in November. But I want to ask you if you have any special advice for people who are voting by mail or if you have any concerns about the voters in Springfield who are going to be mailing ballots to you?
I'm glad you asked that. Counselor Davila also contacted me earlier today to kind of go over some questions that he had about the vote-by-mail process. And I'll, you know, touch on some of the things that he and I discussed. Vote by mail, right now, we've had actually a really great response by Springfield voters. We have over 11,000 requests that we've processed, vote-by-mail ballots. And just so that you can kind of put that into perspective, in the 2016 primary, we had 13, close to 13,000 votes total for the city for the primary. So, right, we're, you know, kind of creeping up on that number of just vote-by-mail requests. And I think the voters of Springfield have really taken to the idea of voting at home. And part of what we've done is installing a ballot drop box at City Hall behind the building. And it was installed last week. People have been using it. We empty it every day, sometimes two times a day. So, it's really working out well. And that kind of is allaying some of the fears that people have that the post office may, you know, delay the delivery of the ballots. What I can say as far as the post office is that we have been working. We actually met here at City Hall with the postmaster, the Springfield postmaster, Joseph Conti. And he has facilitated a daily pickup and drop-off specifically for City Hall. And specifically because it's election mail, they mark the boxes. They have alerted all of their staff, and they have put one of their staff people here at the main post office in charge of the ballot deliveries and pickup and drop-off. And what they've been doing is, instead of taking all of the election mail and bringing it to Hartford to be processed, they take it here and process it by hand in the Springfield office.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and so, it's basically turned into a one-to-two-day process versus the mail that I've heard going to Hartford is five-day turnaround.
Well, you know, what I wondered about today is because I actually voted by mail. I loved it when we saw it in Denver. I think it's a great idea. But I thought to myself, how do I know that you've gotten my ballot?
That's a good question. So, now, once we get it in, within 24 hours, we're scanning it. If you notice anyone who's received a ballot, I can tell you that I know Counselor Edwards has received it because I processed his application. There's a scan barcode on the envelope that you sign, and that barcode, we will scan it in here. And then, you can actually, there's a link on the Secretary of the Commonwealth's website that allows you to track your ballot, to see when we mailed out the application and to see that the ballot's been returned to us and been processed.
So, if it's the actual day of voting and people go in person and they've mailed a ballot and there's no record of it, and they come to see you at the polls, what do they do?
So, your question is, if the voter sent it back, but for the reason we haven't received it?
Yeah.
So, the check-in list, when you check in as a voter, there's a little square that tells the poll worker that is checking you in whether or not there has been a ballot cast in your name. And that square gets with a check mark if you have voted absentee.
Okay, well, good luck. And I'd like to congratulate the people who have the vote signs. It's so important to remind people that there's actually a primary and an election. So, I think we've got some great things going on in Springfield.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, do we have any concerns as to whether or not we'll be able to staff every polling location on September 1st?
Not as of yet. We have reached out to all of our poll workers. And for the most part, the poll workers have been receptive. They've asked questions and, you know, kind of tried to figure out how they were going to be protected if they chose to work on Election Day. Most have agreed to work. There are some that are either older or maybe have an illness that is going to preclude them from this election, and they want to continue to be poll workers. In those instances, we have had quite a good response from people who want to volunteer. There is, you know, a good clip of people in the city of Springfield that are working from home and have submitted applications here. We continue to take applications. So, if anyone that's listening to this wants to apply, the applications are available. They can call us or go on the website. And I believe that we should be fine. Part of what the Secretary of State's office has done in order to kind of facilitate the process through this new legislation is they're eliminating or allowing cities and towns that want to, to eliminate the checkout table. So, when you go in to vote, you can check in and vote, and that one list will count as a check-in and checkout table. So, where we typically had two people sitting there and checking someone out when they leave the polling place, those individuals would be helping people cast a ballot at the ballot box, you know, sanitizing, showing people kind of directions out of the building so that they could leave safely. And so, if we don't need to have six people at certain polling places, we're trying to make it a little bit safer by having less. For example, over at the, just one that kind of comes to mind, over at the Good Life Center across the street, we could do with four people there. It's a small site, very low voter turnout, and we got quite a good amount of vote-by-mail applications for that site. So, I don't anticipate that there's going to be a very big turnout physically for voters there. But aside from that, I think that we're pretty well set for poll workers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ramos, Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Williams.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, thanks for being here. And I know you and your staff are working double time leading up to the primary and especially with all the important changes that are in accommodations that are being made for COVID-19. So, I want to thank you and the staff. And the question I just had was, I was reached out to in one of the, after one of the last elections by a disability rights advocate who was just concerned that accessible voting booths be present at all of the different sites. And I just wanted to check in to see what our process is for, you know, making sure that the entire voting site is accessible for everybody who's coming in or out and also when they're there in the process. Just wondering if we've sort of audited that recently and are in compliance with everything in all the sites?
Yes, so, if I'm thinking of what you're talking about correctly, is the auto mark. That's our accessible machine that we have at each polling place. That is set up typically by the person, the custodian, in each building on Election Day. And I did receive a report that during the last election, one of the machines wasn't set up at the beginning of the election day. So, if they're not set up, we have to actually send somebody out there to open up the machine, make sure that it's working correctly. And it's something that we're used to. We have what we call runners that go out to all of the polling places. So, if we get a report on Election Day or if any of you hear a report on Election Day that when you go to vote, you don't see that auto mark set up and ready to be used, we take that very seriously. And we want to make sure that anybody that needs to use it has the ability to use it without having to wait.
But we've confirmed that they're present and working and ready for September 1st.
Correct. So, all of the election equipment that we send to the polls is always tested here at least a week prior to each election. So, we do have them here physically in the office, ready to go.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Gladys, how are you? First, I just wanted to commend you and the folks down at City Hall who installed the mail drop-off box. I think that's certainly a great addition to folks getting or having a more safe and secure and reliable means to drop off the ballots now that we are kind of dealing with the mail and, you know, an absentee ballot. So, just commending you for that step taken. And a question I had just kind of reworded around the signage or any additional signage that might be going up due to COVID and the actual voting booths around them. And just making sure that folks have the guidance to know what to do around safety measures.
Yes, so, we have, our plan is to have signage, kind of the typical signage you would see at any place that you would go in to be safe, to keep social distance. And the other piece to that will be having our poll workers kind of guide that process individually. I think signage is great, but to have the poll workers reinforce it with letting the voter know they're going to be given a pen, pencil, I'm sorry, vote. And instead of using the regular pencils that we keep at the polling places, which typically stay in the voting booth, we'll purchase kind of the golf-sized pencils that don't have any eraser. And so, each voter that goes to the poll will be given their ballot, given this pencil. They can take the ballot, vote, they deposit it in the machine themselves, which is usual. And in that pencil, they can either discard it or keep it. But that way, there's not using of similar, you know, there won't be any sanitizing of pencils and things like that. And we're going to have a poll worker also there kind of sanitizing some of the high-touch areas as far as the voting booth.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. And it's the last question I had. In regards to, you said that the applications are going to be released for folks who might want to be, you know, poll workers. Can you just maybe describe the need there? Like, how many, can you give me a sense of how many folks have like maybe dropped due to COVID? How many vacancies do you have in regards to that?
I want to say that that last count, we probably had, we kind of, if someone drops out, then we fill the vacancy. So, I would say around 20, and that's citywide. So, it's not a large amount when you think there's, you know, about 386 poll workers that staff all of these polling locations. Out of the 386, there's about 20 poll workers. And that, like I said, for the smaller polling locations, I think that's where we're going. And that, like I said, for the smaller polling locations, I think that's where we're going to not staff them with six, we'll staff them with five.
Okay.
Or four.
Perfect. All right. Appreciate your responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Uh, we have Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you, Commissioner. Uh, and my compliments, it seems to me that you have, you guys have really thought out, uh, to the last detail, down to the pencil, how this election is going to go, uh, as we go on vote, with this challenge of COVID-19. So thank you for that. And, uh, thank you for safeguarding democracy. Uh, my main question, uh, was already asked by Counselor Walsh, and, uh, that was a great explanation. As I myself, as explained to you earlier, uh, I sent out some letters to Springfield and it took them a week to to get there. So I know there's some concerns that only the local, also in the national level about the, uh, the voting and, uh, the post office. Uh, so my compliments to that, uh, for you are on top of it. I just have some quite a follow up questions, general questions rather. Uh, this is also going to be the case for November. We're going to go the same way mail about voters in November as well, correct?
Yes. So, um, we're going to be, many of the people or most of the people that have submitted applications for this, uh, election have chosen to also vote by mail for November.
So then we have people asking for a ballot, um, now in November, they are, they're requesting both?
Yes, they're requesting both. So they get number one now and then in October they get.
Okay, great. Uh, and now are we going to be having signs out of vote today as we do during the regular season? Okay, so everything will be pretty much the same thing?
Correct.
All right. Now, are we going to be doing any kind of notification, um, either by text to let people know that they're voting today?
The only, uh, notification that we typically do would be that connect C T wire, you know, the call, the all call, uh, to the city voters. And we'll do that in Spanish and English.
All right, but not that, just just the calls. Okay, okay, fair enough. Uh, thank you. Uh, again, my compliments, Commissioner. I am really impressed of the level of details that you guys threw out. And, uh, my compliments to you and to your entire staff.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Uh, hi, thanks, Mr. President. Uh, my questions have pretty much been asked by other people, so I won't add anything to that. But, uh, just to thank you to Gladys and your staff for all the more complicated job it is this year and for putting such a good effort into it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Fenton.
Um, thank you, Gladys, for all the hard work, Commissioner, that you are doing, um, with this and the census. I do have one question, and it's about, um, folks that are in prison for Mr. Neener's. Um, I read the state law today and I read that they can still vote. Um, and I got a question on how they would obtain a absentee ballot. So would the ballot, I don't know if you even know this answer, but would the ballots be sent to them based on where their permanent addresses or their lockup facility address? Like, how would they request an absentee ballot from like Ludlow or the Chicken Bee Facility?
That's a great and really relevant question. It's funny that you ask that. We had the postcards that came in today, one of the ones that was processed, um, they registered to vote in Springfield, they requested that their vote by mail ballot be sent to Randall Road in Ludlow. Um, and we, you know, type that information into the computer. They get a ballot based on where they're registered in Springfield. And so they're allowed to vote. The last time we had a big, I want to say push like that was back in 2018 and Counselor Gomez, um, alongside, I want to say, gosh, I was like, neighbor to neighbor, um, went to the facility, they took, um, ba, vote by mail applications and people registered to vote if they weren't registered and filled out the vote by mail application. If they were registered voters, they just did the application. And we had probably, I would say, a ha, a good handful of people that voted from, um, the Hampton County House of Corrections via absentee. Uh, that was back in 2018. And this year, I'm expecting it, um, specifically for the November election. I think there'll be more interest, um, and a better timeframe for people to actually do that. But that's, yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you. Um, I did want to clarify for folks who don't know that if you are, um, arrested and you're in jail for a felony, you cannot vote. But if you are in, um, jail for a misdemeanor or waiting, um, trial, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner, you can still vote. And so, um, I'm, I'm thankful that Counselor Gomez did this in the past because it's going to be my push. Um, a lot of, uh, folks that's been arrested are not aware that they can still vote. And if we want to really re-enter them into the community as, um, you know, meaningful citizens and try to help them get back on the right track and change their life, we have to have a forgiving spirit, but let them also know all the things that are available to them. And they are citizens and they do have the right to vote. So I, um, got that question and I thank you for the answer. And again, I thank you for the hard work. And as far as absentee, um, early voting, I'm sorry, that's my last question. Early voting starts August 22nd, is that correct?
Yeah. So early voting and the schedule is on our city website and I shared it on our Facebook, but it starts the 22nd and it runs through Friday, August 28th.
Okay. And we, um, and folks will go to City Hall for that?
Yes.
Or are there?
Yeah, there's two locations. Um, and the one constant, which is going to be every single day during that period, is going to be City Hall. And then Greenleaf is going to be Monday through Thursday. Um, and we have, what we did was instead of hopscotching around the city, we looked at the historical data and where most of the voters who went to these early voting sites turned out. And Greenleaf really touches, um, about five solid neighborhoods. So 16 acres, East Forest Park, Boston Road, Indian Orchard, and Pine Point, all gravitate to that one location to early vote. And so we decided to expand the days and hours that we provided, uh, early voting at, uh, Greenleaf because we believe that that's going to be our, kind of our big, uh, early voting site.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Fenton, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, if somebody requests a vote by mail ballot and they receive it, but then they later decide that they want to vote in person, what do they need to do?
Uh, they, all they need to do is show up on Election Day and vote. Um, we've had that request because people are concerned that, um, the ballot might not get to us on time. But they want to use that as their first line of voting is that the vote by mail or the absentee voting. Um, so if you receive your ballot and you choose to go and vote in person, either at the early voting sites or at the polls, uh, you can do that.
Okay. Um, just want to give another piece of anecdotal information similar to what, uh, Counselor Davila said. I sent the letter from my law office, uh, in Springfield to a recipient in Westfield. It took eight days to get there, eight days. Um, okay. And then just my last question, and that was like two weeks ago. So my last question, uh, is regarding COVID and voting procedures. We talked about procedures for people who are voting, but not, um, not as much, at least I didn't hear about the people who are working. So do we have enough P P E for these folks? Are we asking that they complete some type of health questionnaire, uh, before they come to complete work that day? I mean, you said we've got over 300 non-regular city employees that are going to be doing this work and they'll, you know, if we're lucky, they'll be in contact with hundreds of people throughout the course of the day. So, so what are, what does the process look like for those employees to make sure they're protected and not exposing, uh, voters to the virus?
So we're not allowed, um, according to the state, and we've been in communication with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, we're not allowed to ask, um, individuals to fill out a health questionnaire. Verbally ask them if they do not feel comfortable, if they do not feel healthy, um, to stay home. Uh, and part of what we're doing to try to mitigate that is each of the, well, the Secretary of State has given us each one package per location of everything from gloves, protective covering for headphones, wipes, liquid face masks for sites. And then, as I said, uh, Pat Sullivan and his crew have actually built the plexiglass dividers between the poll workers and, uh, the voters. So when you go on Election Day and you
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah. You're standing face to face with them. There's going to be an actual plexiglass divider that's free standing on the table. And, um, they're, yeah, so that that's kind of the biggest push. And we're also getting the safety goggles from Smith and Wesson. They only did enough for all of poll workers as well.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton, um, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Letterman.
No, it was more of a comment. Just wanted to say thank you to, um, Counselor Whitfield for her initiative. I've seen it, um, her, uh, motivation and movement. And like, uh, you know, Commissioner Oyola has stated, this is something that, you know, I feel strongly about since, uh, becoming a counselor. We have always advocated with, uh, Neighbor to Neighbor and also Pioneer Valley Project, uh, went into the women's jail and was doing the same thing with Emily Rodriguez and Tara Parrish. So, um, if, just a suggestion, if you wanted to, you know, uh, work alongside them or, you know, try to figure out what worked for them, I would, I would suggest that, you know, we can, we can work on that, uh, that vote. Um, I think that, you know, it's important for us to educate people that, you know, and a lot of folks that are returning citizens, which we tend to use the returning citizen, uh, um, to identify instead of the word ex-con because we don't want to be submissive. So when they, uh, these returning citizens that are coming back to our community believe that they can't vote, and the truth and the fact of the matter is, is that they are eligible even with felonies, as long as that they're not upstate and they're not, um, you know, the, the case is over and and they're doing their time and they have felonies, those folks can vote. But once they're pending and they're in county or they're, they're at county over there and the county correction facility or at the women's jail, they're eligible to vote and their vote still counts. So I just want to say, Tracy, I mean, Counselor Whitfield, I I am humbled and appreciative of your efforts working on this. Uh, and I just want to say if there's anything that I can do to support you, I'm here 110% and Gladys, great work. Thank you. And I want to just thank all of, uh, the council because of the council pushing this initiative in June of the resolution, we are, uh, voting safely. We have three ways to vote and it's because of the due diligence of everybody here at the table. So thank you, my colleagues, for supporting their resolution. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Letterman.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just had one more question for the commissioner, more so maybe a suggestion, uh, which is just that if we're going to be using essentially City Hall as the primary early voting location, the only other early voting location being Greenleaf, um, I think that we should designate temporary parking for people that are coming to vote early at City Hall. Um, it'll take some monitoring, but I know we do have people outside taking temperatures already anyways. Um, and I think that if we're, if we're going to have one early vote location that has a whole empty parking lot, um, we should designate some spots at City Hall for people that are coming down, you know, 15 minute, uh, parking. So whether that is outside, uh, where the meters previously were, uh, or whether that's in the horseshoe, um, I would really strongly encourage, uh, the commissioner to work with, uh, the administration to make sure that there's free parking available for anybody coming to vote.
Thank you. I will, I I definitely will look into that. It's a good idea.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Uh, seeing no further, uh, hands raised in the queue. Madam Clerk, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage. Can you please call the roll?
On approving the election warrant, Counselor Gomez? Yes, Counselor Whitfield? Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Current Absent, Counselor Ramos? Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown Absent, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a special permit for a temporary truck or truck body storage lot at 158 Avocado Street.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. So the proponents will have 20 minutes to speak in favor of this special permit, uh, followed by the opponents who have 20 minutes to speak, uh, against the special permit. At that point in time, uh, the counselors will have an opportunity to ask questions of the proponents as well as the opponents, if there are any. Um, and then we will ask for a motion to continue, uh, the hearing, uh, and then, um, to continue the hearing for potential rebuttals, uh, and will entertain or at least take a vote on the special permits at our next regular meeting, which is scheduled for September 14. Uh, so if there's anyone present to speak in favor of the first special permit, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. My name is Rich Sipek. I'm an attorney here in Springfield with the law firm of Ross and Ross on 121 State Street. And I represent the petitioner tonight, the Springfield Cooperative Farmers Market Association, Inc. And I don't need 20 minutes. I'll try to do it in two minutes. It's a pretty simple application. The request this evening is simply for special permit for the temporary truck and truck body storage at the property known as 158 Avocado Street. And I think everybody on the council is familiar with the Farmers Market. That is the site in question, is 158 Avocado Street. By way of history, real quickly, just, just so everyone knows, the Springfield Cooperative Farmers Market Association was set up in 1942, uh, by Al Finney and eight other farmers in the Springfield area. And they sold 3,000 shares at 10,000 share to raise $30,000, at which time they started the Farmers Market. And the Farmers Market has been in operation for 78 years here in the city of Springfield. And I think everyone's been there. Um, I, I'm About 15 years ago, the Farmers Market started allowing some temporary truck storage in the evenings. Um, the parking is basically on a temporary basis. Quite often, local drivers will drive their, uh, trucks during the day, drop off their goods and store their trailer there in the evening, sometimes for a few days until they get their next job. Um, the Farmers Market, as you know, traditionally a weekend business during the, uh, the summer season. And unfortunately, due to COVID this year, the Farmers Market was shut down permanently. So there's no income coming in there. This is their only source of income. Um, the petitioners rightfully went to the New North Citizens Council back in March and they got unanimous support of the Citizens Council. Um, I also have received, um, from Mr. Dromy, the, the analysis for the special permit from the Planning and Economic Development, and they have no objections to it. Um, it's simply a, um, a special permit to allow them to continue to park some trucks on the site. It's a very clean site. It's very close to 91. Um, and they've been doing it for a long time. They just didn't, they were never aware that they needed a special permit. And it's more administrative than anything else. So in these trying economic times, I would strongly suggest that the council approve the special permit and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Attorney. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, is, did we receive any testimony, uh, of any individuals wishing to speak on behalf of the opponents?
We did not.
Okay, seeing none, uh, we will open the floor up to counselors in the event that you have any questions or comments for the petitioner. Seeing none, uh, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Uh, to the petitioner, you said that you had visited the neighborhood board. You said that, uh, you talked a little bit about that, uh, with the neighborhood board, New North Citizens Council neighborhood board? Um, I did not attend. I unfortunately had a conflict at 8:00, but both of my clients, Mr. Finney, who's second generation owner of the, of the corporation in a, Edward Lipinski, who he and his dad have Lipinski Farms, they attended the New North Citizens Council. And I spoke to them, you know, the day after and they told me they had unanimous support for the New North Citizens Council. Um, Ms. Davis, did we get anything in the, um, email of a letter of support from New North Citizens Council?
I didn't see a letter of support, but, uh, Mr. Dromy may have received one. I'm not sure.
Uh, is Mr. Dromy with us?
Yeah, I did not.
I did not? All right, no problem. Um, I would, obviously I have no objection, uh, but that was my only question. I just wanted to make sure we, uh, I seen the letter and obviously talked to the community. I know the initiative is grand and appropriate. Um, I know this is going to be a two-step process, so I'll definitely be weighing that in when the time is necessary. Thank you, Mr. Sipek.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Gomez. And it might make sense in advance of our next meeting, Attorney Sipek, just to have them write a letter if they did indeed vote unanimously in support of this project. Uh, Counselor
Thank you.
Counselor Whitfield, uh, followed by Counselor Davila. Counselor, Counsel Whitfield, followed by Counsel Davila. Counsel Whitfield, we can't hear you.
I keep forgetting. I have to do it on my phone. Um, thank you, Attorney Sipek, for the information. This is not regarding that. There's an unknown caller on the Zoom and I wanted to know if we know who that is. And if they, if we don't, can they tell us who they are?
Yeah, I have the same question.
The unknown caller, can you please identify who you are? If not, Focus Springfield, can we please drop them? Yes.
Uh, Robert Lozahn, the store manager for Walgreens at 381 Cooley Street in Springfield.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Uh, you're more than welcome to stay on. Um, Counsel Davila.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just some quick questions. Regarding to this permit, uh, I believe the attorneys say that they've been getting for a long time. What prompted the, this action today?
My client had received a, had received letters from the city of Springfield. Violation notices that they didn't have the special permit for the parking. And that was over a year ago.
Okay, okay. But there was no issue per se with the traffic or?
Oh, no, no, none at all.
Okay, okay. And I, I, Attorney, I know the location, but I'm trying to go to the new dollar, free commercial, sorry. I go next door all the time. Uh, but, um, they bring the, the product there, then they sort it out to other places. They don't store anything there, correct?
Excuse me?
I'm trying to figure out what, what the trucks drivers do. They come with the product. They live at the location. They don't sell anything at the location. They, they basically.
They don't, they don't drop anything off there. This is just simply parking their trailers. There's no, there's no product. This has nothing to do with the farmers market. This is just parking their vehicles overnight.
Right. So I'm just trying to figure out why is it called the farmers market then?
If they own the land, that's, that's, that's the owner, that's the owner of the property. So they, the farmers market, that's the petition. They own the land and they operate the farmers market. But the rest of the week and the rest of the year, the property sits vacant. It's a parking lot.
How many trucks can we store there?
How many trucks?
If you know, just a curiosity.
I don't know. There is a site plan that we did file and I don't have the exact number of trucks, but it's laid out on the site plan in the application.
Yeah, I think I see it here. Uh, okay, that's all. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counsel Walsh.
Uh, yes, I'd just like to say that I believe that the attorney has brought up a very good point that I think all of us have to think about when we're dealing with businesses and how hurt businesses have been with COVID. So I think we should keep in mind any process that we can support that will retain our businesses. We, it would, uh, it would behoove us to support these businesses in these tough times. And thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. If there are no further questions in the queue, this will, this will end this portion of the hearing. Can we have the motion to continue this item until our next regular meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Letterman, seconded by Counsel Whitfield. Madam Clerk, on the motion, can you please call the roll?
On the motion to continue the item, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran, absent, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown, absent, Counsel Hurst.
Yes. Uh, this item will be continued until September 14th. And Attorney Sipek, we will see you on the 14th, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is the, an amendment to an existing special permit for motor vehicle service station at 740 Boston Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone present to speak on behalf of the proponents?
Good evening, counselors. Uh, I am the owner of the property located at 740 Boston Road in Springfield.
Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. I'm Hashmukh Gogri, also known as Hasgogri. Address is 736-740 Boston Road, Springfield. We own and operate the gas station and convenience store for multiple number of years, about 13 now. And last year, in a very bad fire, our station got destroyed. And now we are trying to rebuild and, um, the original building was built about 30 plus years and is not in compliant with today's code. And especially the, um, the period of COVID, to do the social distancing would have been impossible for the existing location, which is only 1,000 square feet. And that's why we are looking to expand and add about 1,600 more square feet. And that would allow us to incorporate all the codes and, um, offer more services if possible in, you know, difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none or hearing none. Um, Madam Clerk, did we receive any testimony from anyone opposing this special permit?
We did not, no.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, are there any questions or comments for the petitioner from the council? Counsel Davila, did you have your hands raised, Counsel Davila?
I did, but didn't go up somehow.
No, it did.
It did. Uh, I believe, uh, I, Mr. Gog, I'm sorry, Mr. Gogri?
Gogri, right.
Sorry. Uh, nice to meet you. I didn't quite get why. Do you need more space? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean, uh, right now we only have about 1,000 square feet and, uh, our location is, uh, sometime gets very busy and, you know, and we are not operating for more than a year. So we did, practically we closed down before this COVID situation. And now that I recognize that we have to maintain social distancing along with other codes like handicap bathroom and whatnot, uh, it would, it would not be possible to even do any of those. So we have enough land in, you know, in the back of our property that is unused right now. And we are looking to expand and build another 1,600 square feet, which will allow us to, you know, build a nice, good sized store that can accommodate today's codes.
I, I do end with a fire, Mr. Gogri, and I know you'd be paused for a while and you must be feeling the financial impact. But it's so basically the extra 1,600 square feet is going to be for the store. You are not going to have any more, uh, gas pumps.
Oh, the gas pumps are outside, yes.
So.
We're renovating everything, you know, rebuilding everything. But, um, this 1,600 will be added to the existing 1,000 square feet convenience store. So the total square footage will be around 2,600 and change.
Right, but that new, that new footage is going to be for the store, not for the gas pump. Are you going to, basically, let me rephrase the question. Are you going to be adding any more gas pumps?
No, I am not planning to.
Okay, I see. Um, the reason I bring that up is because it's a good location. Uh, I can tell you from my own experience, that sometimes navigating that corner of Boston Road there with people trying to get into the gas station could be challenging there. So in the future, I will, um, encourage you to maybe see how we can work with the traffic flow. Because again, I can tell you for first close encounters, very close encounters myself, that could be problematic on that corner. So. Thank you, Mr. Gogri. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. If there are no further questions from the council, can we have a motion to continue this item until September 14th? There's a motion made by Counsel Letterman to continue the item. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Counsel Whitfield. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on the motion?
On the motion to continue the item, Counsel Gomez? Counsel Gomez? Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran, absent, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams? Counsel Williams? Absent, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Counsel Allen?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Absent, Counsel Letterman?
Oh, no, I, I voted yes, yes. You didn't hear me?
I was having a problem with my vo, my, my button as well. I'm sorry. I don't want to jump in either.
I'm sorry. Am, am I dropping out? Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, but I, you didn't hear me.
Counsel Allen, I'm sorry. What was that?
I voted yes, but I don't know.
Counsel Ramos?
You already called me. I voted yes.
I'm gonna go, okay, so I'm gonna start all over, you guys, and just go back through everyone just to make sure we didn't miss anybody, okay?
Yeah.
Counsel Gomez?
Yes, I apologize.
No problem. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran, absent, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown, absent, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, this item will be continued until September 14th. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is an amendment to an existing special permit drive up service window at 381 Cooley Street.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
This is Robert Lozahn, the store manager of Walgreens at 381 Cooley Street in Springfield.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
We've been operating at, at that location for, um, well, at, at, at that building now for over 12 years with the existing permit without any issues that have occurred at that time. And we've reached out to the, um, Outer Belt Civic Association and Walter Gould and presented a local meeting where they, um, approved the, um, change from Rite Aid to Walgreens.
Thank you. Are there, are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none.
Hold on.
Yep. Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President.
All right.
I, I just wanted to comment that I, this is in my ward and I met with Walter Gould, called me a couple of times. And I, I picked up that letter from him yesterday. It was hard copy. Uh, brought it to Kelly today and she scanned it and sent it around. Everybody should have it, which, uh, Outer Belt voted unanimously in favor of this because the drive-through has been in operation for 14 years or something like that. But it had different names. It was Brooks for a while, then it was Rite Aid. Now it's Walgreens. So, uh, the Civic Association is fully in support.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Davila.
Sorry, a little slow there with the, with the today. Uh, I think Counsel Allen might have answered part of my question. I did see the letter from Walter Gould and, um, he was very clear with the hours of operation, which I don't see here on the special permit. I just want to make sure that, uh, the petitioner is aware of the hours. If you could restate this hour.
The hours are Monday through Friday, nine to eight, Saturday, nine to six, and Sunday, nine to five.
Okay. Um, okay, that was pretty much just to, uh, to be quick. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do, Counsel, Counsel Allen.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Thank you for recognizing me again. There was a condition that was on the original special permit that there was a concern about. I want to make sure that, um, Mr. Lozahn is familiar with that. It had to do with the tree belt and cleaning up the tree belts was not necessarily met originally. And I believe it was pointed out as something that should be addressed.
Well, we'll certainly, uh, address that, uh, going forward. I know there are a few weeds out there right now, but we'll make sure and get, keep that clean.
Yeah, the, the specific, I don't have the condition right in front of me right now, but I can call you tomorrow or if somebody else has it in front of them. Uh, I don't, uh, see if I can get it up here. It was, that's a nice gesture, what you're saying. It was more specific than that.
Okay.
Do you happen to have those conditions on you, Phil?
Well, yeah, I mean, technically, when the, when the special permit was amended a few years ago, there was a condition that the tree belt was supposed to be seeded and loaned. It's currently mulch. I don't necessarily have an issue with it being mulch, but the, there was a specific condition that said it was supposed to be grass to match kind of the, the, the standard. Most tree belts are grass versus mulch. But, um, so that was the condition that was placed. I forget what the exact date was, but when, I think when it went to, from Brooks to Rite Aid, I think that might have been added.
It's, it's been mulch for 14 years.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that. So I, you know, whether, whether the council at the next meeting removes that condition and allows it to stay mulch, I don't, I don't check to that, but it was a condition on, on a pre-special permit.
So does that answer your question, Counsel Allen? And if you do want to make a, um, a motion to either take that condition out or, or we can simply leave it in, then you, you can either do so now or you can do it at our next meeting.
Yeah, why don't we, uh, why, why don't we do it at the next meeting? Uh, that way I can talk to Mr. Gould as well and, um, and the, and Mr. Lozahn.
Sounds good. Are there any further questions from the council for the petitioner or comments? Seeing none, can we have a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
Uh, motion made by Counsel Allen. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Whitfield. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on continuing this item until September 14th?
On the motion to continue the item, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran, absent, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown, absent, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, this item will be continued until September 14th. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a special permit for a motor vehicle service station at 3111 Main Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, Rob Levec from our Levec Associates.
Can you please state your address, Mr. Levec?
Yes, sir. Forty School Street, Westfield.
Thank you.
So I'm here this, thank you, sir. I'm here this evening representing Zakur Hock. He's the owner of the property at, uh, 3111. And we would like to, if it's okay with you, share our plan. So you can see it on the screen.
Absolutely. Um, Brendan, I don't know who's here from Focus, but if we could please allow him to share the screen, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Can you folks see my screen?
We can.
How beautiful. Okay, uh, so thanks again. So this is the, I'll, I'll go back a couple of sheets here and I will go through the plans and then be happy to answer any questions you may have. So what we have here is the existing conditions plan for the subject property. Subject property is located at 30, 3111, uh, Main Street. This is the existing, um, we'll call it box shaped, um, mobile station. We have the canopy, which is this dashed line here. We have the existing building. We also have an existing car wash. Uh, as you're aware, through the zone change request that we had submitted within the months past, we are, we have requested and received a zoning map amendment to change the subject property to allow us to, uh, increase the use and also have a symbiotic use between the two properties. increase the use, and also have a symbiotic use between the two properties here. So there was a property at eleven Merwin Street that was razed, and this is a vacant parcel here, so this is Merwin Street here, and then this is called Connector A, if you're familiar with that street. There's also intersection here with Dover. What we're proposing is to demolish the existing structure under the canopy. We will be protecting and leaving the tanks, the gas tanks, as they are now. Most of the impervious surfaces that exist on the site, kind of at this, we'll call this the south southern corner, or the southwest corner of the property, this is all pretty much staying the same. We will be raising the existing car wash, so that'll all be removed. And then the proposal is to replace this small rectangle here with a proposed fifty-six hundred square foot building. I do have a rendering of that building that I'll show in just a moment, but what we're proposing is to kind of reconfigure, so this will be the main gas area. We'll reconfigure the parking lot to allow for parking on this side here, also some parking towards the front of the building, the main canopy of the building, and the main portion of the entrance will be here. We're proposing, as you're aware through our special permit, requesting a drive-through service window. The pickup window would be here, and then one, two, three, four, five, six spaces back, we would have the ordering kiosk. We have stacking for a significant number of parking, I'm sorry, of vehicles within the stacking lane, and then we also have a bypass right here, so the idea is, if you needed to, and for some reason that this was a fairly intensive tenant, you could expect that we could get well over ten to twelve cars stacked here without any trouble, also with the bypass lane to allow people to go around. We do have five parking spaces back here, and then another five here, we anticipate that these ten parking spaces will be likely utilized by whoever inhabits the, whoever the tenant ends up being. This is on spec now, so there's no specific tenant, but we would expect some sort of coffee or convenience type of use to utilize that window. Any questions on that information so far?
We will entertain questions after you finish, Mr. Levek.
Sorry, Mr. President, absolutely. I will, so if it's okay, I will then share, I believe this is a rendering. So this is a general rendering of what we anticipate the building will look like. So there would be signage on the front of the building, obviously that would be subject to all the signage requirements. Anticipate that they would have a side gabled roof with a front gabled dormer here, overhang, main entrance to the building. There will be a couple other entrances to the building that not shown on this schematic, but generally this would be kind of looking, if you were at the existing canopies, looking towards the new store. Okay. There's kind of a layout of where that is in relationship to the canopies and the gas station, et cetera. Couple elevation views, different directions. Kind of from the back, this is the back where the drive-up window would be, give you a feel for what it would look like back there, a little bit less exciting back there, but certainly a lot of glazing in the front and the sides. And I'll put my plan back up and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Can we can we actually close out this screen?
Yes, sir.
And then, if there are any questions, and you can bring it back up again, Mr. Levek. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none, is there anyone, Madam Clerk, did we receive any testimony regarding anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the opponents?
No, we didn't receive anything.
Thank you. Seeing none, at this point in time, we will entertain any questions or comments from the council for Mr. Levek. Counselor Letterman.
Thanks, Mr. President. The question that I have is, this is a special permit for a drive-through window, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, normally when we grant a petition for a drive-through window, we do know who the tenant is and what the use of it will be for, and we also usually have a conversation about the hours of operation, which would obviously be informed by who the tenant is. So I don't see any hours of operation listed so far in the permit, if I'm missing it, please redirect me. The reason I ask is especially because I know that on another hearing pertaining to the development of this property, there was some communication from a butler who was concerned about the drive-through situation, just for the impact of the residential butlers that are nearby, so I know we have an area that indicates that the fairly standard language of the drive-through kiosk isn't audible to a butler, which I think is good, we've got landscaping in there, which I think is good, but I'm wondering if you have anticipated hours of operation, or if you are looking to have the permit granted without hours of operation specified.
I think it would, through the President, if that's okay?
Yes.
So I think it would be appropriate for us to give you some detail on what they would be requesting for hours of operation. I'm not sure if they plan on changing it from their current operation, or if the tenant does come into place, how they would be handling that, and if they would want potentially a different hours of operation, but it is a fairly intensive area in terms of the hospital, so I think they would probably want to capture all the different hours and shifts of the hospital, so what I'll do is I'll reach out prior to the next hearing, and make sure that I get you the detail that you need on the hours of operation.
And just to confirm, so you're saying there is no tenant yet, you're not, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be a, you know, coffee, essentially type Dunkin' Donuts types contributor, but you guys have, you guys have, you're in conversations with one, or you've had, you're just developing it to be shovel-ready for them, or what?
My understanding is that there have been multiple conversations with potential tenants, and that Mr. Hock is in the process of permitting it, and then he has not, my understanding is he's yet to secure a tenant, but I can confirm that.
Okay, all right, well, let's get the hours of operation for the next meeting, and then we'll see where we're at then.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have some follow-up questions, but before I ask, I have a clarifying question. I do recall Mr. Levesque's presentation from this property before. Last time, did we continue this, is this continuation from the last hearings? Or is this a completely different permit?
I believe the initial.
That's to the President, sir.
I defer to Phil. I do, this is not a continuation, no, this has not been continued.
The last meeting was for a zone change. You guys drew to a zone change, so this is not a continuation to say there's a new hearing for the drive-up service window.
Okay, so we did dispose that part, okay. Mr. Levesque, so just to follow up with Counselor Letterman's question about the hours of operations, that's something that I myself have a lot of interest. I guess my first question to you is, do we know why the owner's not here today? To answer some of his questions?
He was early on in the meeting, he had to hop off, I'm not sure what the emergency was, but he did hop off about a third of the way.
Oh, he was, okay, I would strongly suggest that he's here because we do have some questions on hours of operations. Now, the reason that I bring that up, sir, is because past couple of days, a police officer was hurt here in Springfield, and there was a big incident regarding drag racing. And one of the places that was identified as a drag race hotspot is in North End. The reason that I say that is because they tend to conglomerate in gas stations. And to me, that's just putting more honey to the bees. So I do have some questions regarding to the safety. Are you guys gonna have cameras that are gonna be connected to the police department to help with the safety of this location?
Yes, sir, there's plans for cameras, I'm not sure of the specific locations, we're also looking to increase the lighting in the area, through, we have a photometric plan that's been provided.
Because I would strongly suggest that they're connected directly to the police station, because again, the force of that area is a hotspot for drag racing, and I do have some concerns with that. I don't think Counselor Gomez is here, that's his district. I would definitely love to hear his perspective on this as well. And have you spoken to the neighborhood council on the wind travel window?
The neighborhood council was presented the information prior to the zone change request, at which point they, Mr. Hock had explained everything to them, and we did receive a letter from them, I believe that's been provided to the council.
What, I don't believe we have the letter, what does the letter say?
They were in favor.
They were, do we have that letter, Phil? I don't see it here.
I don't know if I have that or not, so I, I'm not sure if that was included in your package.
It was, yeah.
Right, if we don't have it, maybe if we can, through the clerk, if we can get it. Because I definitely don't see it here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm only responding because Counselor Davila, I wanted to make sure that, what was my point of opinion, but it was more on the grounds of this specific project came before the council, came before the community about a year or so ago, and there was some undeniable things that transpired, used to transpire at that mobile. The ownership did change, and Sonny, which the community knows him as Sonny, has, did a complete overhaul of that station there, I know that he had put up a lot of brand-new cameras, so that place has, I think it was during that time when Counselor Ash was part of the body, and we were talking about the the Green Light Initiative that traditionally, and I think it went to Counselor Hurst, and then from there, we worked on it when he was part of Public Safety. And then from there, that the ownership had changed, they moved into brand-new cameras. From what I have seen, and what I have understood from the community, I think they're fully aware of this, this drive-up window. I don't know if the community or like the gentleman had stated, Mr. Levek, on what's gonna go in there. But I guess, you know, these questions are really good questions, specific to the petitioner. But the petitioner moving forward, I know that he owns a number of these businesses, and he's really hands-on. He's not kind of a, he owns different businesses and gas stations, Ward Three, Ward Four, all the way up into Ward Eight. But for the moment, that's all that I have specific to that. I know that that drag racing incident that happened is also a concern of myself, but I believe that, you know, C Three has been doing a fantastic job on trying to mitigate that stuff over, which has been transpiring in another location, which I don't want to bring up because they're not even part of that conversation now, but, you know, we're praying for the officers, and also everybody that's involved and impacted, but for the most part, I I know for sure that the neighborhood board, since I've been to the conversations since the meeting, are fully aware of what's going on, and what's, what it's soon to come, specific to this property.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. If there are no further questions from the council, at this point in time, if we could have a motion, Counselor Fenton.
Thanks, Mr. President. Rob, just a question about sheet C Five. I don't know if you have the ability to.
Yeah, can you pull it back up for us, Mr. Levek, if you can, and we'll give you a minute or so.
There you go, sir.
Thanks, Rob. So, the C Five, see in the southeasterly portion where it says grass area, what is that? How can that be grass?
Where are we looking?
Right where your cursor was, a little to the left, right, north, right there.
Oh, yeah, I apologize, so there, so the half-tone or the light gray, that is the exist, that's the existing conditions plan, laid under our proposed conditions, so you're absolutely right. That will be, that will not be grass, that will be, that will be the two-minute area.
Okay, and then, thank you, and I don't see, is there a signage plan in here anywhere?
There's no signage package detailed, there is an existing mobile sign here. It will remain. I believe they may file an application to change the, you know, the logo details, but I believe the sign is to remain. And then there was also, I believe, a question regarding the billboard. I think there was a comment from your planner with regards to that, if I remember correctly.
Phil, is the billboard, does that have a permit?
Well, the billboard, the billboard was located on the city-owned property that was sold to Mr. Hock, and as part of that sale, there was a condition placed on the on the purchase and sale agreement that the billboard was to be removed and could not be relocated, so to me, the billboard needs to come down, you know, my, personally, I think it's kind of a, it's kind of an odd to stick a billboard right in the front of your new building anyway, but it's a billboard, I think it's only probably twenty feet high, so I'm not sure.
All right, just ask Mr. Hock to look into that before we vote, Rob, if you could, if there's a condition that needs to be removed, then it's gotta go.
Yeah, we understand that, and we'll make sure our plans reflect that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton, Counselor Davila, and if, Mr. Levek, if you could stop sharing your screen, please, Counselor Davila, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Levek, I might have missed it in the presentation, but did you talk about the flow traffic with regards to the drive-up window?
I can speak to that again if you'd like, for sure.
But you did address it, would you mind, because I think I missed it completely, my apologies.
If it's okay to share my screen again?
Up to the President.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm hearing noise in the background, my apologies.
Okay, so just to give you, so this, you should be looking at sheet C Four of my plan set. So what happens is there's a couple curb cuts off of Dover. Those will generally remain as they are. There's a couple curb cuts off of Main Street, those will also remain, so as mentioned, the canopy is here, so folks can come in and they can get the gas as they do now. What will happen is we anticipate that folks will generally come in off of Dover through this access, but they can, they can access the drive-through lane pretty much from anywhere on our site, and then they would come through the back. So if you look at these gray, grayed-out cars, this would be the stacking lane. So our pickup window would be here at the very end, so we're maximizing our stacking. We have one, two, three, four, five, six to the window, I'm sorry, to the kiosk, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, probably sixteen, but, you know, we can easily fit, and these are pretty good-sized cars as we laid them in there, you can easily fit fifteen to sixteen vehicles in the stacking lane, which you can imagine, that's, that's pretty busy drive-through. In addition to that, we also have the opportunity for a bypass lane, so that if people want to get out, or get around, they can get around, and they can easily get to Merwin Street. We also have a curb cut on Merwin, where that would be full service, we would come and be able to take a right or to get out of, onto Merwin, and, you know, get where we need to get to, and then also get back through our site to get to Main, or back to Dover, should somebody want.
So they're gonna be entering through Dover onto the window and exiting through Merwin, correct?
Generally speaking, yeah, and they would have the opportunity if they need to get back through, should they, should they want to traverse the site again.
When you say generally speaking, does that mean that they can enter through Merwin?
There is an entrance from Merwin.
So if somebody comes through Merwin, how, what do they do to get to the drive-up window?
They would need to come around. They would just need to come around the front of the site, either through this drive lane here, because remember, this building's coming out, and this is just the canopy here. So there's a drive lane here that comes around, and there's also a drive lane here.
Do you have any estimation of the volume vehicles that are suspected with this drive-up window?
It would vary based on the use, but you could expect that most of these trips are, well, a good portion of the trips would be pass-by trips that are already in the area, maybe already going to Bay State or something like that, or Mercy. So, with the drive-through use, you might see, you know, approaching, you know, fifteen hundred vehicles or so, but a portion of those, it really depends if it's a more intensive use. Obviously, there's the Dunkin' Donuts that we had done on the other corner, so I don't anticipate it, it will be a Dunkin' Donuts, but you can, you can be assured that, you know, traffic would likely increase to the facility, but again, it's not, not seen as a major, it's mostly pass-by trips.
Is that fifteen hundred cars a day?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Now, this Dunkin' Donuts, it's not there yet?
Dunkin' Donuts is there, that is correct, it's already operational.
They don't have a drive-up window, do they?
They do.
Yeah, they do.
Oh, they do, okay, so I haven't been to it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on my meeting, I'm sorry.
Sorry. All right, the reason I ask, because as we all know, this is a street with this corner, and sometimes traffic backs up on the highway, 15, 20, 30 cars deep onto that exit. And, you know, maybe I was a little concerned with that. You know, I, my initial reaction is we can keep one entrance, one exit, maybe through Dover and Merwin might be easier. I don't know, I'm just thinking aloud here, but just a concern. I will defer to Counselor Gomez if she has any specific suggestions on that or any question, warnings, thoughts on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Gomez, I see your hand is raised in the queue.
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Davila for pointing out that exit. I know when we were working on the exit on where, when we were discussing this with Dunkin' Donuts, which is across the street, Counselor Fenton and I were really concerned about, you know, the entering entrances right there outside of the mobile, right there on Dover Street. And I think on Merwin, and I mean this with all due respect, Mr. Leveque, I think that that should be curve-cut to go left only, because a lot of that traffic, because if they can't get back to Dover, we know that Dover is a really cutoff street to get to the hospital, I would hate for, you know, because that's residential, there's more residential on that Merwin Street, that people are able to take a right-hand turn there, which I think that, and this is just like Counselor Davila was saying, speaking out loud, maybe we can just do a one-way entrance of just going left. And if folks want to, you know, get to this site, I would think that they would go around, because, you know, this street and this part of Main Street has a lot of one-ways, specific to Dover Street and also Cumberland that's on the opposite side. I think that with that being a highway entrance, taking the left would push folks to go up to at least Chestnut Street, and then Chestnut Street is a better street to maintain, to figure out, and a wider, and a better street for people to empty out to and not into Merwin. I think that, you know, behind the facility, we had concerns of the woman that owns that house behind there, and that was one of the concerns, was traffic pattern because of small children. And I know she wasn't here today, but she did raise a concern on the last meeting and was recorded on standing. So, and I want to be able to serve my constituency at the best of my ability and to really look at that specific entrance on maybe becoming not an entrance, but only a left turn, because if we're going to be, and we could do two lanes going out, I would think, you look at, you have the, that's respectfully going to be where everybody that comes out of that drive-through is going to be taking that right, and then you have a pass-through lane there, that I think that we're going to have a problem kind of in front of that driver window if somebody's coming in and people trying to swim around and make sure, making that a one-way out. So, if folks are coming behind the building, you know, they're going to be taking that right automatically. They can't take a left turn there, and then taking a left turn out of Merwin, onto the highway, and then from there, up the street to, I forget what street that is, but onto Chestnut Street, so then they can kind of get around the neighborhood. Most of the other, you know, entrances and curb cuts I'm fine with, but that curve cut, respectfully, I do have a concern with it being a two-way in and out of the area. I think that we can probably relook at that as being a curve cut going to the left, but the rest of the project is not going to play with.
So, just if I could clarify through Counselor Gomez, you're suggesting a exit-only onto Merwin Street with a left turn only, so?
Exactly, exactly. So, we don't inadvertently impact the neighborhood with, because folks, what's going to end up happening, we have a light at the corner of Merwin and Chestnut, and there's going to be a pileup up there. So, what we want to do is to make sure that we don't have a pileup on Merwin on these heavy, you know, our upticks, so, you know, 6:00 in the morning, you know, rush hour, and we're not congesting that little area, because what's going to end up happening is when ambulances come and things of that nature, that street is not wide enough. And I think that moving up the road, you know, I forgot what street that is, I just know it's the Onrav Street in the north end. I think that if we just make it a left turn only and don't let people, and don't have folks be able to come in, you know, folks that want to go to this site should only be able to access this site only from Main Street. And I want to just make clear, these curb cuts on Dover Street, they're going to stay, you're saying?
Yes, they will be unchanged.
All right. So, also, that second curb cut on Dwight Street, on Dwight Street, on Dover Street, that's also kind of a little concern, because we already have an exit coming out of that area where Dunkin' Donuts is. So, we just want to make sure that, you know, we have some signage there, when they're leaving there, that they understand, you know, coming in and out. But my biggest concern is that Merwin Street curb cut, which I think should be left turn only, with not a way for people to be able to turn in. I think that, you know, it should be an exit only, because it'll give us a good flow of, like you said, there's going to be a lot of folks there, and we want to be able to flush that traffic out of there as fast as possible. And I think that would be a perfect way to move that traffic out of there. Hopefully, that the petitioner won't have an issue with that. Maybe the next time when we talk, we can mitigate that.
Thank you.
Like logical comments, we'll certainly, our plan will reflect that prior to the next meeting.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just going to be brief, just to echo what Counselor Gomez just said, I was going to allude to what I was going to say. We have a lot of ambulances that go there, particularly, they go up Dover Street and that corner at the end, Dover and Chestnut, is used constantly, all day, in and out, with ambulances going into Bay State. And I, they're around there, exit 10 going north, and I think it's exit 9 going south, is also heavily used. And so, we need to be wise how we're going to use the traffic, so it doesn't impact emergency services, because everybody from Chicopee, Springfield, all the towns in the north, and the south of them, a little bit on the east, a little bit, they use that exit there to go to Bay State. So, we need to think about this one very carefully, that does impact public safety. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Davila. Are there seeing no further questions or hands raised in the queue? Is there a motion to continue this item until September 14?
So moved, so moved.
Motion made by Counselor Gomez. Is there a second to Counselor Gomez's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the motion to continue this item?
On continuing the item, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran, absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The special permit will be continued until September 14. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a special permit for the expansion of a non-conforming use, used car sales at 724 Page Boulevard.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak to this item? Is there anyone present to speak on behalf of the proponents for this item?
Hey, can you hear me?
We can. Can you please state your name and address for the record, and you will have 20 minutes to address the council, followed by the opponents who will have 20 minutes to address, to address the council?
My name is Jeffrey Dias. I'm from Six Waters Edge, Loto, Massachusetts, 01056. So, I'm the general manager at New England Wholesalers. It's 724 Page Boulevard. So, we currently, it's a sales, auto sales facility. About a year ago, we purchased 734 Page Boulevard, which was a service facility. We continue using that service facility today. We did substantial renovations. I'm not sure if anybody's driven by, but we did do quite a bit of work on the outside of the building. It was kind of, the old owners didn't really put any money into it, and finally, we came in and did that. So, the purpose of the special permit is we're trying to just add 12 sales spots in the 734 Page Boulevard. The purpose of it is just so that we can create a little bit more flow with our properties. Our 724 Page property is a little bit small, and this one is substantially bigger. So, what we're trying to do is just not increase the size of our business, just to make a better flow of the two businesses working together. We're also just trying to add a couple spots for customer parking, which we didn't have that before, and we're trying to add a couple spots for employee parking as well. We also have been in talks with Kathy Brown. She's the president of the East Springfield Neighborhood Council. We've been kind of back and forth discussing, you know, how many spots we should add, what seems like, what flow is better, what doesn't flow. We came up with 12, which she agreed to that. We agreed to that. She discussed that with her board. We couldn't really meet with the board. We did meet with the board actually back in, I think it was February. We never had a chance to meet with them again, so it's kind of, everything was over the phone and through email and text. But she did agree that 12 seemed like a good fit for us, and that's why we're here today, to see if we can get that, that all set.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, did we receive any testimony of any opponents wishing to speak against this special permit?
We did not receive any testimony.
Okay. We will now, at this point in time, take any questions or comments from the council. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Diaz runs a very nice business on the corner of East and Page Boulevard, attracts people from all over the New England region to look at his vehicles. They do a great job, and I also want to applaud him for working collaboratively with the East Springfield Neighborhood Council. I was at the first meeting that took place before the world was upside down and we had a pandemic. And so, they've been working on this for several months, and I'll just cut to the chase. So, they've got some agreed-to conditions that the petitioner and the neighborhood are in favor of, and I'd like to make a motion that we put them into the record at this time. The reason that I'd like to do that is that I feel when we reopen this item in September, it'll be a little bit more streamlined if we can all just say, oh, yeah, what a brilliant idea that was. Why don't we just go forward instead of starting from scratch? I'll forget. So, my motion, which I sent to the clerk and the president before, so, Madam Clerk, you should have it, so you don't have to scramble to type here, but it would be to amend the condition number three, to say that the use shall be developed in accordance with the revised site plan, which indicates that 12 vehicles for sale and eight customer/employee parking spaces at 734 Page Boulevard, and 28 vehicles for sale at 7, excuse me, 734 Page Boulevard, and 28 vehicles for sale at 724 Page Boulevard, with the addition, and with the addition of conditions 1 through 13. So, that's the first condition. I'm going to do it all as one, because I don't think there'll be any controversy. The other one is to insert a new condition, number 12, say no outdoor storage of tires or vehicle parts, and that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. There has been a motion to amend two conditions by Counselor Fenton. Is there a second to that motion?
In the motion.
That motion has been seconded by Counselor Edwards. Is there any discussion regarding that motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on amending those two conditions?
On the amendment to the conditions, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran, absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the conditions have been amended. Are there any further questions? Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question for Phil. Phil, in the write-up from the planning department, you indicated there's some ongoing disagreement about the public way and whether or not that is under the ownership of the petitioner. Has that been clarified yet?
I guess I got to defer to Counselor Fenton. I know that was a, I know that they, the neighborhood was talking about that as well, so I'm going to defer to Mike about whether that issue has been resolved.
Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Counselor Letterman, that has been addressed. The issue was that there was a sidewalk that, for a period of time, the petitioner was parking cars on. And over the course of time, I think he began to think that it was his, so he painted it black, and we went and realized that that wasn't right, so people couldn't walk by. The petitioner has admitted the error and sandblasted the paint, and it's now a sidewalk again, and he's agreed not to park the cars on it, no problem.
Great, no problem then. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments for the petitioner? Seeing none. Madam, can we have a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made to continue this item by Counselor Fenton, seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on continuing this item?
Counselor Fenton, thank you for sending that to me. That makes it a lot easier for me. On the motion to continue the item, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran, absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. This item will be continued until September 14. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is to amend an existing special permit motor vehicle sales at the property known as 193 Taylor Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone present to speak to this item on behalf of the proponents?
Yes.
Please state your name and addresses for the record.
Samuel Springer, 40 West area Street, Springfield, Massachusetts.
Regina Hudson, 42 Narragansett Street, Springfield.
The floor is yours. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the special permit, what it is that you're looking to do?
Mr. Sam Springer is for 193 Taylor Street, so he is submitting the special permit to be the petitioner of this property. So, just to give you a little bit of background on Mr. Springer, he is the, he built his home here, 40 West area Street, so homeowner, and actually built the home, owner of Hanford Oil and Springer's Oil since 2011. So, he's conducted great businesses here in Springfield. He's also the owner of the multi-office building, 538 Boulevard here in Springfield, retired, 13-year Springfield Public School teacher. So, he has invested over $65,000 already into, into 193 Taylor Street. He's fixed the roof and updated the roof. He put LED lighting in this building, removal of the old hazardous outside sign, he'd epoxy the floors, and he also did an environmental site assessment for oil and hazardous materials. So, he's invested a lot of money into this property, as well as he has excavated and removed the impacted soil and the hazardous soil that was there in the property. So, he's definitely dedicated to making a successful and high-quality business. So, he, we did receive a recommendation from the Amory Quadrangle Civic Association. They're, really, their only condition was to put up a black fence instead of a silver chain-link fence, because he does plan on putting a fence. So, put a black fence or an enhanced brick wall. So, he will do that as well. Was there anything?
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of- Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, have we received any testimony from the opponents speaking in opposition to this special permit?
We have not received any testimony.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments for the petitioners from the council? Seeing Counselor Letterman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the petitioners for a, a good presentation. Let's add a quick logistical question on the, um, permit. And reading the write-up from the planning department, it indicates that they will, um, their recommendation is just to limit it to seven vehicles, given the size of the property. And, um, I don't see that actually included in the conditions, uh, later on. So I just wanted to see if we need to incorporate that into the conditions.
Uh, Phil and/or Madam Clerk?
I think one of the conditions is on the, 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 the existing special permit, which limits it to seven. So it's just, it's just the, the permits that's there are already limited to sevens. So this special permit would just mimic what's already in place.
Right, but I'm saying in, as this permit stands before us, it doesn't seem to actually include that condition in the listed conditions. Are you saying that because of previous special permit on the property included it's all set? Or do we need to add it?
Well, there is a condition number four that says all, all conditions.
Oh, all conditions of the May 28th.
Right, right.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Uh, Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a question. I just have a comment. It's great to see an old friend Regina. We date back to high school. And I think, Sam, if you got her on your side, you're, you're doing pretty well. I know doing good stuff for our city in terms of, uh, working with life insurance and credit repair and all that good stuff. So just want to give you props for joining the call and thank you for helping facilitate the process.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Williams. If there are no further questions or comments, uh, from the council, can we have a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
A motion made to continue this item by Counselor Whitfield. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the motion?
On continuing the item, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran, absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Uh, this item will be continued until September 14th. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the final item on the agenda?
The final item on the agenda is for a special permit for motor vehicle sales at Northwest Worcester Street, also known as 93 Grochmo Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone present to speak in favor of this special permit?
Yes, I am here. My name is Stephen Shahabian.
Yeah, you broke up just a little bit. Can you please state your name and address again for the council?
Sir, Stephen Shahabian, 64 Cedar Street in Foxborough, Mass. I am the owner of Bertrand Mobile Home Park and the petitioner.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Thanks. Uh, I, I thank the council for letting me make my presentation. I've owned, uh, Bertrand Mobile Home Park through my corporation for 20 years now. And, um, I don't know how many folks remember it from a long time ago, but it was quite a rundown mobile home park at the, the, um, code enforcement officers, when I bought the park, called me in and we had a large meeting about how we could improve the park. And, um, I, we have done so over these last 20 years. We get continual compliments from code enforcement, from the building inspectors, from even, uh, citizens living in Springfield in the Indian Orchard area who remembered the park in the way it was before. I think I put close to a million dollars into that park since I've owned it. Every single aspect of the park has been approved, uh, I'm sorry, improved. So, um, a few years ago, we got the zoning changed in that area, that little corner of the park for business B. We came to the council and the council approved that. And, uh, we put in, we have storage units going in at this time. I don't know if the folks have driven by it, but that, that is ongoing at this moment. And I, I have had a used car license near, closer to my home for 25 years. This is something I do on the side. I, I buy old, mostly old muscle cars and fix them up and sell them, you know, one or two at a time. Well, I'm losing that location. And so I thought that the best thing to do is to transfer that, you know, that used car license, basically, to Bertrand Mobile Home Park. It's a perfect setup for it. There's a, uh, I don't know, uh, Mr. Gomi gave you these little pictures that I took and a little, but there's a fenced-in area probably of almost 15,000 square feet there. Um, there's a, uh, five bay garage there. Uh, there's security there with cameras inside the garage, outside the garage, even pointing down Grochmo Avenue. There's a large gate to go in. There's outside lighting. There's, there's an office in there. There's a bathroom in there. So it's really perfectly set up. And I only do this, uh, you know, on the side. So the conditions that I agreed to, we met the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, um, well, it's a few months ago now. We met them at the site. They came to the site to the use, to the garage. Uh, and, you know, park attendants came there as well. And we had a discussion about it and there were some questions about traffic and, uh, number of cars and activity and things of that sort. And I was fine with the conditions of restricting it to just five cars. More than likely, there'll be, I probably sell on the average of one or two cars per month. Like I said, it's something that I do on the side. And I've been doing it, like I said, for 25 years now with, with no problems. So, um, that's basically it. It's, it's something that I enjoy doing and it's, it's a perfect setup for it there at, uh, at that garage area, in my opinion. Then the county, the Indian Orchard Citizens Council thought it was a good idea to, you know, that area is, is sort of losing business and this some sort of business in there with sales tax being generated, income tax being generated, things of that sort. And I've agreed to not tear any, uh, vehicles there. It's mainly just a place for location for the business and to possibly sell a car here from time to time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, I do believe we received a phone call regarding this special permit from someone who might have been in opposition. Or Phil, uh, are we able to play it at this time?
I, I think Focus Springfield is gonna play it.
I, I see it. Thank you, Phil.
Fortunately, I don't hear it, but.
Focus, you need to click the option that allows you to also share your audio.
I am Esther Sutler. I reside at 216 Worcester Street, Indian Orchard. My neighbor Steve Sebastian and I signed a boundary line agreement. I still own a third of the original land. I have a stipulation on that the property cannot build or use land 30 feet from the property line. My number 7378420. Thank you.
Uh, so thank you, Focus Springfield, uh, and thank you, Phil, for, for coordinating that. At this point in time, uh, there certainly will be an opportunity for a rebuttal. Uh, I will not entertain a rebuttal from you at this, at this time. We'll retain, um, we'll entertain that our next regular meeting, unless, uh, a counselor has a question for you, uh, regarding that particular statement. I certainly will, will allow you to respond at that time. And I also think Phil had wanted to weigh in at, at, um, regarding that particular, uh, comment also. So at this point in time, we will open the floor up, uh, for counselors to ask questions. And we also will, uh, make sure that the individual who called, if they still have a question, uh, will be able to, um, have the information about joining us at our next regular meeting, uh, in the event that they want to be here in person. So Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Ramos.
I'll defer to Counselor Ramos, Mr. President.
Counselor Ramos.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I think, I, I think it would only be fair to give the petitioner an opportunity to respond and, uh, sort of clarify whether or not there is a conflict between the land that he owns and the land that the, uh, that the resident was referring to.
Sounds good.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm not even sure who the person actually is. There's only one home, one, one single, one neighbor, one single family home that's anywhere near the Mobile Home Park. And I thought the lady's name was Whitecliff. She's up on the hill on the top on Worcester Street, if you're familiar with the area. And she is probably referring to the storage units that we put in, uh, which would be, uh, this used car lot is, one thing, we're not building anything, but it's nowhere, it's, it's gotta be, it's gotta be 300 feet away or more. But that could be the only person, because that whole area is, you know, where it is. It's just the fire training center. It's the old Monsanto. It's the sewer pumping station. And there's only one home probably within a quarter mile of that property. So all I can think is it must be her, but I didn't think that was the name of the owner. But there's no building being built, uh, anywhere near. And the storage units were approved through a site plan thing, you know, two years ago. And that's the only thing that could be close to her property, if it's the person I think it is.
So Phil, can you also weigh in? I know you reached out to the opponent. Um, I don't know if you had any correspondence, but you think there might be some sort of miscommunication?
Well, again, I, I would agree with Mr. Shahabian. This, this is the property on Worcester Street. It, it's, it's, it is not adjacent to the proposed use. It, I did do a measurement on GIS and it's, and it's over 300 feet from where this particular car lot would be located. So it's nowhere near 30 feet from her property line. But, but there is really only one single family home on Worcester Street. And the only way to access this site is really around, uh, through Grochmo Avenue. So, um, I did call her. Um, she, she didn't answer, but I did leave her a kind of a detailed message explaining where this use was being located and left her my message, but she did not leave me that. I mean, that's why I could not send her a link to the meeting tonight because she didn't leave a email. So I, I, I did inform her if she wanted to, to, to participate tonight. I'd be more than happy to send her that link. I did not hear anything back from her. So I'm assuming, um, what I, what I left on her voicemail may have clarified the issue for her, but, uh, I heard back.
Thank you, Phil. Uh, I know, um, Counselor Letterman, you had a question, sir?
I had to say, I was gonna have, make the same point, Counselor Ramos, so I'll move on.
Okay. Um, Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm still not quite clear. So is the resident saying that there's an overlap in her property and the petitioner? Or there's no overlap?
Well, there's, um, I, I don't know. Mr. Gomi wants to answer that enough, but there's no, there's no additional building being built. That's, that's one thing.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying, the, the, the property in and of itself, is there overlap between your property and her property?
Overlap? Uh, well, the storage units that we put in border her property. She's up on a hill and her property kind of comes down the hill a little bit. And that's where our storage units were, are, are in the process of being built. But that was a completely different, uh, permit and site plan that was all approved a couple of years ago. There's no, there's no, of the property. And, and even the, the storage units that are being built are certainly aren't within 30 feet of her house.
How far are they?
How far are they? Um, I would say the last building is going to be, uh, probably 75 feet away or something to that effect and 30 feet lower than her house as well. I don't think she could even see that last building from her house. She's a nice lady. She's 80 years old and she, you know, just gets overwhelmed with everything.
She's still, she's still concerned with her, with her quality of life and.
Yes.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are, are there any questions or comments, uh, for the petitioner? If there are none, then we will take a motion at this time to continue this item. And Phil, if you could make sure, uh, if we could reach out to the, um, to the lady again, uh, and in the event that she wants to participate, if we can make sure that she has a link for the September 14th meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. Uh, can we have a motion at this time to continue this hearing?
So moved.
If we want to end the meeting, we.
Yeah, I missed one.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Um, that, that, that motion was seconded by Counselor, uh, Davila. Counselor Edwards on the motion?
No, no, actually I wanted to make a statement after the motion.
Okay, all right. Um, sounds good. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
On the motion to continue the item, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran, absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. This item will be continued until September 14th. Uh, Counselor Edwards?
Um, I just want to take this opportunity, first of all, to, uh, send my own personal condolences to Kateri, uh, or Counselor Walsh for the loss of her family member. Um, and I want to also thank my colleagues and the people associated with the city who have reached out and left me the messages or spoken to me personally, regarding the death of my father. Uh, we buried him this morning. Um, he died on my birthday. Uh, it's been a fairly rough week for me personally. Um, my, uh, one of our daughters had a double mastectomy this week as well. Um, so I'm, I, I've been a little distracted. Um, I don't, all of you are old enough to have had to say goodbye to a family member. And then it is a difficult time. I just want you guys all to know that when you did reach out and when I did hear from you, it, it, it gave me a, a brief respite from the drama of my own life. And I just really want to sincerely tell all of you how much I appreciate it. Um, my heart goes out to Kateri. Um, she, and I'm sure she understands how I feel because of the circumstances of her situation. But, uh, just know that your texts, your, your comments on Facebook, your, your personal calls, they really meant a lot to me. And, um, I may come off as very hon- uh, honorary once in a while, but, um, my dad was a crier. So, um, and I, Jesse can contest that I'm a crier as well. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and let you know how much I, uh, we may debate and argue about issues. But the camaraderie of being on this council is what, um, I greatly appreciate and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Um, Ma- Madam Clerk, is there any further biz? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I, I would be remiss if I did not thank all of you for reaching out to me. Uh, my brother John, uh, the oldest in our family, uh, passed away unexpectedly last week. A tremendous loss. So, and I, I appreciate all the, uh, notes and I was so surprised to get a plant because I'm usually the one who organizes the flowers. So it was, it was certainly nice to, uh, to receive it. So, uh, the, the Bennett Walsh family, thanks you.
We certainly want to thank all of our administrative assistants as well and all of those, um, who reached out to me, uh, to try to help coordinate and facilitate it. Um, it, it certainly did not happen, uh, solely by one individual. So I, I appreciate all of their assistance as well. Um, Madam Clerk, is there any, uh, further business before the council?
There is no further business before the council.
Seeing none, we stand, uh, do we need a vote to adjourn, Madam Clerk? I, I feel like it's been a long time since our last meeting. I feel like that was something that we needed to do at the end of our last meeting.
We do not need a vote to adjourn.
Not need a vote to adjourn. Okay. We'll see everybody September 14th. And to those individuals who are running for office, good luck to you.
Oh, yeah. Good luck.
Good luck. Good luck, everyone.
Good luck, everybody.
Good luck, guys.
Vote early and vote on time, September 1st. God bless.
God bless everyone.